Blueprint, and so as we go through the budget process this school year, we want to be able to align and strategically invest our dollars to support our strategic plan. And so this is our opening conversation that really kicks off that process. And we'll have several meetings throughout the spring, semester, leading up to June, when we, when our goal is to adopt our budget at that time. So I'm going to hand it over to Martha Aguirre so that she can share some information that we need to consider as we launch the budget process.
Thank you, Masaya Vera. Good afternoon, Board President, trustees. We are here today, as Masaya Vera mentioned, we've started our 2324 budget cycle and development process, and one of the critical components of these, the process is to meet with the board regularly to discuss what we're developing and then also understand any areas or focuses of shifts or directional pivots that we need to take. I'm on, actually, I'm on the page, the first page, which basically covers the agenda. Within that, you can see that we'll be reviewing property values discussions and revenue projections, and Mr. Walt Byers will be presenting on those areas. I'll give you an update on our budget development, and then our healthcare update will also be reviewed by our newly appointed Director of Employee Benefits, Mr. Juan Chavez, who's sitting here at the table with us, and Ms. Cortez, Chief from Human Resources. I'll mention, it's important to note, and you all are very well aware, we are going through our ADA legislative session, and along with that comes a lot of concurrent events occurring at the same time. There's a lot of motions or proposals being filed and in discussion in the session at this point, and of course, a lot of these impact how and what we'll be operating when we come and open our next fiscal year. And so a lot of, we'll be keeping you updated as we move through that process, but we'll go ahead and get started with a property values discussion.
Property values discussion is a requirement of the first report. That's why we did it last year, and we're doing it this year. If you don't do it, every year you get docked points on the first report. It's important that we do this. The presentation is up. If it's not, there's, and then page two.
It's page three of the presentation.
Page three of the total presentation. Then within that section, page two is, it starts off with the budget, the 2324 budget. And so, you know, we'll adopt the budget in June, and then the tax rate will be adopted in August, as we do every year. I just also want to remind you that when we adopt our budget, the INS portion of the debt payments are budgeted on a calendar year, and so our 23 taxes pay for our 2024 debt payments. Now, the next page. Going into the property value discussion, these are the different sources of property values, the El Paso CAD, the City Tax Office, and the State Comptroller's Office. The CAD starts, it starts off with the CAD issuing the preliminary values in April. And those preliminary values are used to budget our revenue, and then the certified values that we received in July are used at the tax rate. The city uses those values and then applies the different tax rates from the different entities to come up with a levy. And the first levy we receive is October, it'll be October of next year, October 23. And then that's one of the values, we'll go into that on the next page. And then also, the comptroller uses the values, and they issue preliminary values at the end of January. And the reason those are so important is because the comptroller values are what are used on the summary of finance for our state funding. They adjust our state funding based on those comptroller values. The next page shows these values. Kind of went into it last year, how the values were always changing. Each one of these entities, the values are always changing, and then we just get the snapshot of the values on each date. But for instance, on the certified values, that first line across, when they were issued last July, we showed a 6.88% increase in the property values. And they got to the City Tax Office, it was a 9.51% increase in the values based on what they billed. The next line, the values in the financial audit, that's also from the city, but that's in June, that's what the values is in June, and they usually come down. The comptroller values, we've received those for this year, and based on the comptroller values, we had a 10% increase in property value growth this year. And then the final values from the comptroller will come out in August 31st, August 31st. And then the next page, there's a little graph there, and I added one more number there. So it's a graph for each of those two years that were on the prior page, but I also put in the preliminary numbers, the preliminary CAD numbers. So on that graph, the first two numbers are from the CAD, the next two numbers are from the city, and the last two numbers are from the state.
Is that the blue line?
The blue line is 21, and the other, the orange line is 22.
So the 20 million and the 18.7 all relate to, that's the first set of numbers that he's referring, and then subsequently.
So you can see that April, the CAD told us that our values were $20 million. But at that time, what they always do is they'll give us a historical comparison of the difference between preliminary and certified, and it always drops. We have to apply that discount, you know, a number to reduce it to what we think the certified is going to be. And then we also meet with the CAD, and we're actually, we're going to meet with them in March, and they'll give us an idea of what's going on. But the reason, the reason it drops is because of changes to exemptions, appeals, lawsuits, and settlements. So that's why it drops so much. And then this is also what always happens, you know, you see the drop from 20 to 18, and then a big increase to 19.5, that's the city number. So the city number starts going up, and then, and then the city number starts coming down as they start going through all this, as they start settling things. And they're, you know, they're refunding money, and so that comes down. And you see, the final three numbers aren't that, aren't, there isn't that big a variance in those final three numbers between what we have on our audit and then the two state values.
So, Mr. Byers, based on the conversations that are happening at the state level right now, in terms of property values and the reduction in property taxes and stuff, we see, are, is there a negative or positive impact that we're anticipating based on the state level, do you know, at this point, or maybe not?
What we think is going to happen with the state is increased funding. And basically, if the state increases funding, then our funding will decrease, our local taxes will decrease, and that's what we, how we expect it to happen. As far as values are concerned this year, I'm not sure if it's going to be another year. Let me go to the next slide. It shows the growth in the last few years. So you can see, it was, it was pretty flat until this last year. But in like, in 2018, there was 3% growth, in 19, 3%, 2020 was 4%, 2021 was just over 1%, and then that 1% jumped up to 10. So we don't know if we're going to get another 10, or if it's going to drop back down.
I mean, and we typically, the percentage of funding that we get from the state is significantly higher than our property.
Yes, it is, yes. There's an example coming up too, on that, as well, but there are.
But I guess my question on what Masaya Vera was saying, the state funding is going to increase? We don't, we don't know, or your projection?
We have the, I have a slide where we're talking about some of the considerations that are currently being discussed, where they land, you know, it'll be, but right now it appears that everything looks like we will have an increase in state funding.
For how long?
Well, once, well.
Bienniums.
The biennium at the, we can count or assume for the biennium, and then the discussion initiates the following.
And we know how bad the Texas Legislature is, so that's really hard to be thinking about every two years, on how that could be.
So, I mean, I would share that, you know, and not to derail the presentation, because I know that they have some scenarios that they're going to share, but I would share with the board that anytime you're in the budget development cycle during a legislative session, there's going to be several unknowns, so you're going to be building your budget with a lot of unknowns and a number of different scenarios, because at the end of the day, you don't know what direction. I mean, you can typically predict, but sometimes, you know, again, it'll be an interesting time with, with, with the legislature in session.
We're hoping that in May, we'll get all these answers.
That's a great hope.
So in the meantime, we, as Masaya Vera mentions, we start kind of having the top class projection, and then, you know, your standard, and then we're facing that, because we, and we, and we need to kind of be, we have to be ready to propose and share with you all as we shift, as the news comes, you know.
So, because I'm hearing all the conversation about this money coming our way from the state, common talk right now, but are you saying then, though, that based on this formula, that if we get more funding from the state, that we will receive reduced funding for local taxes, and therefore we are?
No, no, I'm not saying that. If every, like, if everything stayed the same, that's the way it works, if we get more from the state. But if the state, like I mentioned, increases the basic allotment, there'll be more money for us from the state. It only affects our property taxes related to the state, and like I keep saying, but there's an example coming up. So then this next page is just some of the, just to help you go, when we go through this other stuff. But like I was saying, as local funding increases, state funding will decrease, and all in all, it's not supposed to have any effect. We think it's going to happen, that's the way it happened this, the current year we're in. State funding decreased and local funding increased. We expect it to be the opposite next year. State funding will increase, and that portion of the local funding will decrease, but all in all, there'll be more money because the state will increase. FSP here is the Foundation of School Program. When you look at the other things, we'll be talking about the MCR, the Maximum Compressed Tax Rate, that's due to, is at the M and O rate. The local fund assignment is based on the MCR from the state. The Tier One are the basic programs of student data, the Tier Two is our state enrichment, and VAT and VATR are the order approved tax rates. Now, if you go to this page, we're getting into the numbers a little bit. Page eight, yeah, page eight. So the way it works is that this maximum compressed rate is calculated based on our property value growth, and each of the last four years, there's been tax compression where they've reduced our M and O rate. So for 2022, that compression, that MCR calculated at 8678. Then that carried forward into setting our tax rate, and that plus, plus the golden pennies and copper pennies, the Tier One and Tier Two pennies that had already been approved by our voters, set our tax rate for that year. So our tax rate that we just, that you just said in August was a dollar, $1.61. Now, they're going to, there's going to be more tax compression next year, and in the revenue, our initial revenue estimate that we're giving you, that compression is included in there. So for next year, right now, based on the preliminary numbers we have, we have, we see a further 6 cent decrease in the, in the tax rate. When I'm talking about, as this compression happens, you can see that local fund assignment in that first section, it's finally up.
Yeah, they have.
First section, the local fund assignment for '22 shows a negative 168 million, and the prior year, it was a negative 160 million. So as that number goes up, the state funding goes down. So based on, just on that part of the formula, we lost $7.6 million in state funding, but we make that up on the tax side, the tax side.
Can you make sure that we're on the same page? What page are you on now?
Now, I'm on page nine, that was page eight.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Now, we're on page nine. So this shows our tax, our increase of 10.22%. This is a little bit different from the other number, because this is what's on the summary of finance, all this data is from the summary of finances. So for us, our property value growth was 10.22%, and just, you know, to put it in context with, SISD was 15.8%, YISD was 10.8%, statewide, 19.5% increase in property values. And that's basically how state, how state funding works, is based on this property value growth. The state needs that property value growth every year to keep everything funded.
So as you can see, El Paso, when we talk about how, you know, we're losing enrollment, and we're, you know, on the more traditional or more established parts of the city, we don't have that growth in property values, as far as there's no growth in developments. And so Isleta and El Paso have not, don't have that growth that you see with Socorro, as they have more growth in the city, you know, in that part of the city.
So you're essentially saying that the 10.22% increase that we saw, the 8% increase that this one saw is more so a function of the increase in existing property values rather than the development of new developments.
Yes, yes. Socorro had a bigger increase also because they had more new, new home, new development, and we didn't.
Does this include any commercial?
Yes, it does.
And so there's, you know, do we, do we know the percentage of commercial, you know, taxing?
I looked at that based on the state numbers, and yes. Residential, based on the values, the preliminary values the state just put out, residential is 62% of our values, commercial is 25%, and then non-real property, not, which is non-real estate, personal property is 13%.
So we will be meeting with the El Paso Central Appraisers District in the next week or so, and we get an update on all that, the growth and the expected progress that we've got within our district, so we can then turn around and share a summary of what was shared with us.
Okay, now we're on page nine, page 10. This, I'll just look at our column, but there's also, you can compare it to Socorro, Isleta, IDEA schools, and the statewide numbers. This shows total revenue from the summary of finance, which is a near final number, and it shows total revenue, both general fund and debt service fund. So that very top section shows state funding, M and O funding, and then the 166 million is the total funding for that year. The next little section is the debt funding. You can see how much our local taxes support our debt. We don't receive that much state funding for debt. And then the third one is the total, the two added together, and then those percentages are the percentages for the total funding for INS and M and O. So our funding is 55% from the state, 45% local, and you can see how it compares to the others. The statewide number is the area where you can see that the state number is lower than local, but everybody else in our area, the state, well, our entire area, the state number is greater than that. And then that bottom section shows the ADA for each, and then it just divides the funding by the ADA to get an ADA per student.
I think something to note on this page, if you're on page 10, which I'd like to bring to light, is that you've got EPISD, Socorro ISD, YISD, and IDEA schools. You know, as we think about the conversations that are happening at the legislative, you know, in the legislature, you're going to notice that IDEA schools receive 100% of their funding from the state, which means that all of that funding is being siphoned away from public schools. They do not tax any, that there's no taxing entity, so they get all of their funding from the state.
And then if you look at the bottom section, the revenue per ADA, you can see that there's higher than anything anybody else for just the general fund. So just on the state numbers, they get more than any of the school districts do. Well, that's the way it's set up, I don't know why.
That's the whole problem with charter schools. In a nutshell, like, this number really just shows how bad charter schools are for public schools, right? Because when you, when a kid leaves a public school, they take that money with them to charter school, and then now, you're going to bring in vouchers, which the governor is championing, and they get to take that money away with that. And so it's really crippling the public school system with all this, and the $760 million that IDEA has here is on a state level, right? Because it's not just the campuses that we have here, so that's why it's much higher.
Statewide IDEA.
And IDEA is a whole disaster within itself, right? So it's, it's bad news all around, and I think that's what we really need to grapple with as we move forward on being creative with this, because, I mean, the charter school system's only getting stronger, and now with vouchers, what is kind of our plan with vouchers in terms of customer service? Because that's, like, we were already dealing with charter schools taking our kids, but now vouchers are taking our kids in the next school year, whenever that passes. So it just makes me think about this decline in enrollment on a bigger level, on how do we keep the kids in the public school system, dealing with all the horrible things that the state is doing?
This is a state, this is, this is not state, this is local.
No, no.
Well, no, for the IDEA, that is.
IDEA is state, because IDEA is a public school, public schools, quote unquote, for the whole state of Texas.
Right, but is this, is this the amount allocated for the local IDEA schools?
No, that's the state.
Statewide.
You're asking, I don't know, we could.
Because they, like, they have a board for all of the schools that are under, because they're public, but that's also, like, charter schools don't have accountability, so.
That seems really low for the state, though. So how many schools are there? Is that?
They're big, they're a G V, they're coming in here, $10 million to come in here.
If their final ADA is 63,000.
Well, that's 63,000 for, I mean, that, that's the size of their total district compared to our, you know, closer, closer to 50,000, you know, 50,000. But, so statewide, they get 100% of their funding, which is, I mean, if you looked at them in comparison to a school district that was about the same size, you could see if there's any discrepancy in the amount of funding that they're getting as a full school district, if you will, versus.
Yeah, because there's.
Because they've got an enrollment of close to 63,000. So if you look at the funding that's coming from the state for a school district of 63,000, you could see a true discrepancy there.
Right.
Because there's 143 of those schools in the state. So that's where I'm confused about.
But you, you don't receive them by school, you receive them based on ADA. So you've got 63,000 students, if you look at the bar right underneath the yellow line, so you've got 63,000 students statewide that attend IDEA charter schools. And they're getting, what, 706, you know, million dollars worth of state funding.
Okay, so I didn't realize that that number, that's, I didn't realize it was that low, the 63,000, I thought it was higher than that.
So, okay. And going by what Ms. Saqueira is mentioning, if you see PISD, our general fund allocation with 40,000 students is 466,000. And with 20,000 students more, they get almost double the revenue.
And you know, another thing, I noticed when I was doing this, everybody's ADA went down, even Socorro this last year, everybody's ADA went down, and statewide, the ADA went down. IDEA schools' ADA went up. Then the next graph, the next one is a graph of the property taxes that we give you every year. I think the last time we gave this to you, it wasn't with the newer rates in there. There's our rate, and then everybody, all the other districts, county.
Mr. Byers, this question might have been asked already, but, so when I'm looking at the line right above the yellow, where the state, local, and then total FSP, you know, when you give the percentage that we get from the state and then the percentage that we get from the local, can you, can you explain one more time, why are we seeing almost 67% state funding to Socorro and close to 75% funding to Isleta, and only 55% of funding from the state coming to EPISD? What, what drives that?
The biggest thing is the state debt funding. So if you look further up, where's the state debt funding, and we're at 963,000, and then Socorro's at 12.4, and Isleta's at 18 million.
So, okay.
The second.
And it's basically, basically because they're poorer districts than we are. If you divide the total enrollment by the property values, our wealth per student is higher than the other ones, than those two. And that's what drives the debt, the state debt fund. And then this is just kind of a summary of what we just went over, but remember that the M and O tax rate is determined by the TEA based on our property value growth. We set the tax rate, we're setting what they tell us to set, and that's the way it's been ever since HB3 went into effect. Then our INS rate is determined by our property value growth and our bonded debt payments for the next calendar year. We're going to adopt it in August again, and then.
So this change in the tax rate, as you recall, back in 2019, our tax rate was at M and O was at $1.17 through the passage of that TRE, but with, in 2019, the legislative session enacted the House Bill 3, which required that tax rate be pretty much managed and controlled by the state. And so that, we have a very small window of opportunity to garner more revenue through a tax ratification election, but it's all part of that House Bill 3 process that shifted that.
And so, I ask this every year, and I might ask it again in the coming months, but we really can't raise taxes anymore because of that, right? And if we do, we're within a certain limit, and then after that, that triggers an election.
Correct.
Can you kind of break that down a little bit? I just like hearing that every year.
Right now, we did two TREs in the past, and we increased, first we did 3 cents, then 10 cents, so we went up to the maximum 13 cents at the time. But then in 2019, they increased 13 cents to a 17 cent max. So right now, there's 4 cents out there that we could, you know, go to the voters for. But one thing, those 4 cents are the copper pennies, not the gold pennies. So they wouldn't be that valuable as compared to, you know, the TREs in the past. The max golden pennies is 8 cents, and we have the 8 cents. But if we ever need, you know, needed more money, that is one option.
And what is?
That would be our last resort option.
I couldn't give you a number, I'd have to.
Can you explain the difference between copper and gold? I even get confused with this sometimes.
The, well, the copper, the gold is the, is the maximum Tier One funding, and the copper is the, each penny isn't worth as much.
Okay, can you explain it in layman's terms, so the way to understand it? The gold pennies is, is you get additional funding from the state on top of what you already have, but the copper pennies are, you just kind of rob Peter to pay Paul, like, it's the same difference.
Well, it is extra funding also, you know, it is extra, but not as much.
The weighted value of the copper pennies is not as significant as the gold. What we can do is, I can draft a summary as, you know, as easily to explain in the Clivnus version, Finance 101, and in the copper and gold. Uh, of Finance one oh one and and in the copper and gold pennies, uh, and provide that through the packet, so you have a a reference.
TRE is just moving money from MNO, is it MNO to INS or IB?
TRE is more money, it is more.
Well, because you you're seeking.
There's two reasons.
It could be both ways.
You're seeking those pennies.
You're increasing your tax rates, you're getting more local money, and then you're getting more state matching money on the copper pennies. I I just said it's not as great as it used to be when we could get gold pennies.
Because they're subject, they're subject to recapture.
Swapping between NO and ISW.
Up to eight cents are not subject to recapture.
Actually.
That's if you pay.
Because your total tax rate still remains the same in a TRE.
I'm sorry, I was, I.
So no, a TRE, you could also increase the tax rate.
You're gonna, I know they.
We've used it, here in this district, we've used the penny swap, which never increased our actual tax rate.
Can't ask for.
But you can ask.
Through a TRE.
Through a TRE, it would be a voter-required process.
Taxing.
Correct. Any more questions here? Do the revenue. As I mentioned to you, uh, as I started the presentation, we are, through this session that's currently in in process, there's a lot of unknowns that we're currently trying to to jive through, so to speak. Um, and so we're gonna give you, uh, what we know, and and I don't know if you want to share a little bit here or and go ahead.
Okay. Right now, the the knowns and the unknowns, and what we know right now are the, um, the current law formulas. So what we're doing so far is running numbers on current law. And then we also know our enrollment and ADA projections. The formulas are based on those projections. What we don't know is the MCR for next year, how the state is gonna compress, compress the taxes again. We don't know the property value growth, and we don't know the the legislative session changes that are gonna occur.
So the projections that we're gonna share with you as far as revenue are very preliminary. Um, and they're based on current law. So as we start hearing more about where the legislature is moving and leaning towards is if they're considering any of the proposed priorities that are, you know, have been in in discussion amongst districts. Then we can start sharing some more of of what those scenarios will look like. Um, but at this point, this is a very conservative, basic, uh, projection that we have.
So now we're going into.
Page fifteen.
So for property, our first line item here is, uh, property taxes. And right now, we do show a small increase. This is based on a four percent property value growth, just putting it out there. And then that property value growth would decrease the tax rate by six cents. But even with that six cent decrease in the property, in the property rate, that increase in values would generate a little bit more revenue. You can see those are the items we we budget every year. I just pick out the big ones, and one of the big one is interest, where we're we're earning lots of money in interest finally. In February, our yield for interest was four point seven zero percent. February a year ago in twenty-two was point one five percent, less than half a percent. So it's grown that much. And that eight million dollar forecast is based on five percent interest yield for the whole year. Because we we think that the interest rates will go up to five percent, you know, before June. And then it, and we're just forecasting five percent for the rest of the year, it could go higher.
Could think we refinanced, right?
Then the, another big one is miscellaneous revenue, the one point five million. It's the same budget as last year, but the one big change that happened was, uh, we received this IRS subsidy for our twenty-seventeen USC bonds, and that it's five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And beginning in twenty-two, we moved that money from from a credit to function seventy-one to a credit to the to the miscellaneous revenue. So that five hundred and eighty-four thousand, one of the reasons you see function seventy-one going up so much is because of that, that the revenue's here. Then our state revenue shows a a increase right now of five point six million. And that increase right now is based on those golden pennies. So the state had already put that in for this year, and so the golden penny yield is going up. Well, I can't find it. Anyway, it's going up. Okay. And then the next one is the federal, uh, federal, uh, revenues. And these areas are financed by, are forecasted by different areas. Federal indirect is forecasted by the Finance Department, and we have it going down to four point five million. And the reason it's going down is because of the loss of the S R funding. So we're not gonna be able to apply that indirect portion to the indirect, the S R funding anymore. Our Char's number is staying about the same, we're forecasting seven million. We get that from from the S P E D department, and there's a T P A that works on that. Impact aid, we're forecasting the same, four million, two fifty. And we get that from the Business Services Department, there's a person that takes care of that. And then, uh, E-rate, E-rate, we we move out at the end of the year, but we budget the revenue at the start of the year. And the Technology Department forecasts that also with the help of the T P A. And we're forecasting that to go up to one point three million dollars. And all in all, right now, we're showing about an eight million dollar increase in revenue. And then the assumptions that we made are, is there at the bottom, uh, our enrollment, ADA, property value growth, and the tax rate that we're we're forecasting.
So you're still forecasting, you know, a thousand student loss as we have, you know, for the last?
That's correct. That's the the projections that were provided, um, through our, um, ASAP department. Uh, using the that cohort survival method that that is in place.
I have a couple of questions. On the tuition, are we expecting any additional funding because we're expanding our pre-K three, pre-K four programming? Or are we expanding our pre-K three, pre-K four enough that we would expect a tuition increase?
Possibly.
So we're we're working through, and I know at the our next board meeting in April, we'll be presenting to you the tuition rates, uh, for your consideration. Um, we're in the process of evaluating how the new, uh, early childhood programs, um, that we're introducing will be, could be impacted through that tuition rates, if that's the approach we're gonna take, uh, to our students.
How many classrooms are we expanding? Like, how many more classrooms are we anticipating including for the next year?
So my understanding is with the Montessori program, we're, uh, pro- projecting two sections?
I think, I mean, so what I would say is preliminary for us to give you a projection of how many, because we submitted a survey. It's been out now for about a week and a half. We've got significant interest in that. And so we're still assessing how many completed applications we're getting so that we can determine. Our preliminary projection was two sections, but I'm anticipating that we would need to, you know, increase that. Uh, we're also looking at, um, adding, like, right now, we have, um, half-day, three-year-old programs. We're looking at offering some full-day, three-day programs, because we know that would draw more enrollment. But that's gonna come at an investment from the district, because we only get half-day revenue, even if we offer a full-day program.
And I know there's a way to recapture some of that, um, with the formula funding. So if you could provide detailed formula funding projections based on that pre-K three, pre-K four expansion. Um, I know it can be very convoluted, um, you know, so.
But that's the purpose of these workshops, so that we can get, you know, you all can provide us feedback on information that would inform your decision-making, and then also, you know, provide us some good information about.
My understanding is that we end up, we could get a percentage of that, you know, wad of money back at the higher grades, and that they kind of tack it on. But it is a partial percentage, and so I would love to have a breakdown just based on the completed expansion. And the other question that I had was rentals. Where do you traditionally get the money for rentals? Are we talking about, like, high school facilities?
Building rentals.
Okay.
Like, when a church, uh, comes in on Sunday and rents a, rents a building at one of the schools, things like that.
So one of the things that I've sort of been, um, concerned about, specifically talking about rentals, is it it feels very prohibitive for community members to, um, sort of be included in accessing those, you know, our high school buildings, for example, for for club teams to practice. And, um, just sort of talking about what it what it is to build community hubs at our schools and our campuses. Um, so I'd like us to look at that process a little bit more. I mean, if it's only a hundred thousand dollars that we're making, I would love to know if we were a more amenable, um, to having community members come in and utilize our facilities. And that would build stronger community hubs, um, you know, with just community organizations, athletics, programming specifically. Uh, you know, I I would love to look at that, because this doesn't seem like a huge number. And I also want to know what it would cost us, right, to open up a facility in terms of the lighting, the electricity, um, things of that nature, um, just because I I would love for us to have a more open-door policy, specifically with athletic clubs, um, for our facility's usage.
And I I can, I can, uh, I don't have all the details, but I do know that there are certain, um, exceptions or exemptions that are provided. Ms. Sagheveda, did you?
Yeah, I just, I I also just wanted us to be mindful in, you know, absolutely, we want to be open, and we want to coordinate and collaborate with our communities. I think that the other, you know, the balance that we need to find is the the, you know, of course, the cost of that. But the also the wear and tear on our facilities, our our fields, uh, our equipment and those things. Because those then become unintended costs, you know, for that as well. So, you know, doing a a good deep dive analysis would would benefit us, so so that we could actually look at, you know, what is the because, you know, you're right, I mean, it's a small amount. Some of that is not about, you know, income that we want to bring in, some of that is just, you know, also making sure that we preserve long-term, you know, facilities and and things of that nature. The other thing that I would share, um, you mentioned, um, something about the the tuition, the pre-K. There was one other thing that I was gonna add.
Percentage wad of funding allocation?
It'll come back to me.
Yeah, and my my thing with that is I think the other districts are, um, doing a better job of allowing community partners, specifically with athletics, to come in, utilize their facilities. I mean, kids go where their club teams are, and if their club teams are practicing at a school and they like it there, you know, a lot of times, they'll end up there. So I want to make sure if other districts have a practice like that, that we're not continually, you know, behind because they're figuring out how to have stronger, uh, community programs.
Eventually, just, you know, if I could just interject here, our local policy, G K D. It, we open up our facilities, and they're open to the community for no charge, uh, for the two hours after school. And that, that is to allow the community to use the, um, the facilities at no charge. In addition, we have, um, an inter-local agreement with the city in which we, uh, use parks and they use our facilities, we use their parks, so that we can, uh, do a lot of those club activities uh, with the, um, that you're talking about. And then also, I'm just maybe local, there's a formula, and I'm sorry that Mr., um, Corona is not here, but there's this particular formula, and if it's a student-centric, um, activity.
Okay.
There's no charge for the student. And in addition to that, all of our facilities, um, um, like the tennis courts, the outdoor facilities are supposed to be open to the public at all times when school's not in in session. So we do have a comprehensive.
That's really good to know.
And I think that we can probably get you a report as to that.
No, that'd be wonderful, and thank you for sharing. That that's really helpful to know we have that. I mean, I'd love to look at that policy. Two hours is maybe a little tight for club teams. But the feedback that I'm getting from community members is that it's very difficult to utilize facilities. So I don't know if it's because they're being guided to some mystery form, and the form, nobody ever gets back to them. So I'm getting different feedback, so I'd love to, um, just sort of do a deep dive, that'd be great. Thank you, Sessi.
I have a few questions. Just on, I I'm thinking about rentals, um, of this conversation that just transpired. But then also the properties that we have on the rolls that we just have not really moved on. And then declining enrollment. And so for me, it's all kind of connected. And, um, as we continue having these conversations of rightsizing and just closing schools to close them without a plan, as was voted on a few months ago. My concern is that we're not dealing with these properties now that we have before we get to that point. So I'm I'm wondering what that amount is in terms of how much the properties are. And then I think if there's properties that, I mean, we've had some that are ten years old. Um, I know that we're getting a plan in place for a facilities committee, which is something that we've been asking for for the past year. And I I had those conversations, so I'm glad that that's happening. But I feel that that's gonna be really vital, um, to the budget in terms of possible means of revenue and stuff like that. So I guess what I I would like to see is kind of like, I mean, and with that budget, we kind of tackle those issues at the same time. Because I'm assuming right here, um, you always give us the worst-case scenarios, which I appreciate. And I think changes, our enrollment for the next year is gonna go down to four years, right? One of yours, those scenarios that you do, you're like. But then you gave us one last year, and the enrollment has not lost a thousand kids this year because of tactics that you've been putting in place, and those tactics are still gonna expand, and they're gonna be enhanced, right? Into this next year, so hopefully, we're gonna still stabilize enrollment into the next school year?
Correct.
Well, and we're, we were, we were, we had a planned, um, enrollment review for you at the February board meeting. Um, and and we moved it to March, because the staff that was critical to the presentation was not available. So, uh, we will have a comprehensive enrollment review. I I think that it, that that's much more comprehensive than you've received in the past. And we've also, uh, gone through the RFP process to, um, to commission a demographer, so that we can have, uh, more long-term views, um, aside from our internal enrollment review. So, um, yes, uh, the enrollment review is really helping us strategize, you know, with our budget, you know, program expansion, you know, how we're gonna, you know, tackle or begin to, uh, formulate a facilities master plan, you know, all of those pieces. So you'll start to see some of those COGS, you know, in motion. And and in in March, we'll give you a comprehensive annual enrollment review of where we are. Where we've specifically seen declines, where our strategies are looking to bridge the gap in those particular areas and and so forth, so.
And so the other thing that I think would be really helpful for this board to see, and and this could be an endeavor, I get it. But I I haven't necessarily seen the best instrument that could really, it was a good picture of these properties. So like, let's say, we have the oldest property that closed in twenty-ten, and it's still there, we still haven't lost it. So I really want to see a month-by-month breakdown, since the moment that that property closed till today, on how much we have spent maintaining that property.
And to kind of sort of add to that before I forget, I I do think that it would be valuable to the board also if we did have a long-term lease versus sell, um, versus sale write-down. I I asked for that over a year and a half ago, I still haven't gotten it. Um, and the answer that I got back was just basically, it's not in our interest, but that doesn't answer the question of the cost evaluation. So just saying, you know.
Yeah, no, and and I think that's important, and especially these properties are just sitting there, and then it's like, oh, well, we want to sell them, but if we're not making money, and there's a lease that could come in, or whatever it is, like.
There are school districts across the country that we're seeing more and more that are accusing to hold on to their property, just because the long-term land value is so, it's worth so much if we look at how much land is worth. Um, so I would be really, really interested to to have that information.
And I think that that's part of the work that we would do with the with the surplus property committee as well. Um, because, you know, the the the, yes, the lease, and, you know, you would want to do a cost analysis of the lease versus, you know, if you sell a property, then that property now becomes a taxing entity. And we would want to know what kind of taxing revenue we would we would generate from, not necessarily just from the one-time sale, but what is the long-term revenue that we would generate, because then it becomes a taxing entity, right? So those are the kinds of things that we want to be able to do, um, as we continue to work, you know, through through that plan. And, you know, again, the initial sale of any property would be, you know, would 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 support and supplement our, uh, our fund balance. Um, but if, you know, becoming a taxing entity then would would support our our.
Long-term.
A long-term.
And Martha, the way, the reason that I'm asking this through through the budget, I I just want to be very clear on on that. It, I think you bring to us every single year, this is how much money we're losing, millions. I think almost 20 million every year because of declining enrollment. But I also want to see the number on, this is how much money we sold. I mean, we, we spent maintaining these properties, right? This year, and this is how much it's amounted. And that's why I'm saying very specific month by month for every single property. Because if I remember correctly, when the school closures happened four years ago, they said, oh, we're going to be saving a million dollars or whatever for whatever number they set. But then all those properties are still not sold and, and we're still maintaining them and we're spending money on them. So really, it goes back into the research on school closures, how these closures don't really save money in the end. Right? And we're, we're still talking about it, and that's why it's so important to have a plan in place to move forward. Cause then we're just kind of closing to close, they become my source in the community, and then we didn't save the money and there was no point of doing that. And we displaced a lot of people. And, and so that's basically my explanation on why I'm asking you these things. Um, because it was like a little ambiguous, but I, I think that would just be really helpful for, um, a board like the one that we have where there's a lot of questions on the money and money savings and how we appreciate being fiscally conservative, um, for some of these things, to see what tools we have moving forward. And we have a good understanding of all those things to help reduce the deficit.
Let me just mention on this, um, I put, I'm the one that put rentals there and that, I shouldn't have put rentals. I'm going to change that for the next time to building usage. That's really what it is, it's building usage.
What is, what is the difference between that and rentals?
Well, I mean, we're, we're collecting money, but it's not really a rent. It's for, it's for charging somebody for using the building.
Facilities use agreements.
So it's the same thing I was talking about.
Facilities use agreements.
I was gonna say, is it, does it change the, no?
Yeah, like, like when we did the Bassett and Morehead, those were facilities use agreements, right?
So as we move on to the next, uh, session, uh, it's, it's a very brief budget development update that I've got to share with you. So I know that, uh, Masaya Vedra, uh, started a discussion, uh, sharing some of their concerns or, or impacts that are, um, potential negative, uh, impacts to our district as, if, as legislative session moves on and if these vouchers do come, uh, come to fruition. Um, because again, those dollars that would be earmarked for public schools would then be moved away. What I've listed here are priorities that would potentially generate revenue for our district, um, moving forward. And so I listed the, the, the five, I think, that are big, big top, hot topics and hot topics discussion for, for our community members and definitely our employees. So one of the, the first ones that they're talking about is amending the school finance formula, um, to, instead of using ADA, average daily attendance, to generate the revenue for our district, that they would consider using the enrollment. So, um, I, this one is, is definitely, uh, we're one of few that are remaining in the states in the U.S. that actually, uh, fund schools in this manner. Um, but just to give you an idea of what gen, uh, revenue that would generate, uh, we would be about an additional 26 million dollars, uh, with our current enrollment if the state were to shift to funding our, our school districts with enrollment versus ADA.
So a question on that is, is one, how likely do you think? I mean, obviously, we're all council referees, but how, what, what's the likelihood in your opinion that we're actually going to move to school?
Well, when, when we went to, um, when we were there for El Paso days, I know that we were in Representative Buckley's office. And, um, the, the initial report was that there was traction in the House supportive of, of that. Um, I know that the superintendent organizations from across the state are pushing that really, really hard. Uh, and, and I think that there may be an appetite from, uh, the, the state, uh, to move in that direction.
And it kind of sound, it feels to me like they're, they kind of have to move this direction because the voucher, because they've got vouchers on the other end and this sort of balances that, that out, right? And so we're losing on one side and gaining, it sort of washes out. But the bigger question I have is 26 million dollars is a lot of money, uh, which means our kids aren't coming to school. So, I guess the question would be, um.
Well, but I would, I would share with you, yes. I mean, I, I, so right now, so we've hovered at 90% when you look at the formula that they use. Right now, we're at 92. Our goal is 94. So we're still not hitting our goal, but the measures that we've put into place have allowed us to increase our percentage at least by two percentage points, right? So, I mean, we're making progress, not the kind of progress that I'd like to see, but we're making progress. And I think that the greatest thing that we've, or the, or the, the most powerful thing, I would say, that we've done in our efforts this year is to bring to the attention of everyone in the school system that attendance is the number one predictor of student success. Because, and we, every time we talk to teachers, every time, you know, Martha has a really wonderful graph of, you know, if we were at 100%, this is the amount of money that we would be getting. This is what we would getting at 9, 96%. So people can see that if we get to our goal of 94%, this is what it means. And this is what additional revenue would allow us to do, you know, in our budget. It would give us more room in our budget to do things and, you know, specifically address compensation. So I think that everyone is, is making concerted efforts with that in mind. What I would also share with you in terms of the argument at the state level for moving away from ADA and moving to enrollment, it's an equity issue. Because if you think about, uh, more influential school districts who have different, that, who don't have the challenges that we have in terms of attendance and getting our kids in school. I mean, cause we know that our, some, a lot of our families are surviving, you know, day-to-day, right? Um, you know, they're, they're very easily, year over year, able to hit those 96% or above. While school districts, like school districts in the El Paso area, because we're funded by ADA, the, the, the funding that we get to from the state is always significantly lower. So that is a huge equity issue. And I know they try to resolve that with recapture in, in, in some ways, but it's still a disparity because there are, the, the, those attend, attendance challenges are not present in, in those districts, the way that, so enrollment would also level the playing field, you know, in terms of, you know, revenue.
As far as, as far as vouchers go, um, I, I wouldn't be worried, honestly. Like, I was, I was there last week and I asked, I was there for a State Farm thing, but I asked our, our State Farm lobbyists, like, what are the, what's the word on the street? Like, cause they're, they're involved in insurance, they're not involved in education. So I felt like they were a pretty unbiased source. And they said, there's, it's not going to happen. They said they might do some type of like pilot-type thing, like in, you know, in one of our big urban areas, maybe Houston or Dallas or something. But as far as statewide, they, they said there's, it's, the party's in there.
Yeah, I think in, in our visit up there, I mean, they were pretty clear that vouchers are probably not going to stand much of a chance in the House.
Not in the House.
It's going to be discussed in the Senate area.
I, I guess my question would be, where are the rural communities on that?
Actually, that's the reason.
They're against it.
And they're against it. No, I know they are, but are they losing, are they still that stronghold? Because that's what stopped it in the past.
They're, they're against it, and, and so, yeah, I mean, and, and I would tell you that, you know, the, again, the, the superintendent organizations that were affiliated with specifically Texas School Alliance, uh, were working closely with a professor, professor out of Michigan. Uh, I think it's the University of Michigan, Dr. Cohen. And he's published an article that really talks about the fact, that the failures of voucher programs in all of the cities where it's been.
Oh, I read that, that was good.
Uh, where, where it's been put in place. And, and basically what you happen is, i- is your top-tier private schools, they don't accept the vouchers. So the private school, um, opportunity that families are seeking, those doors are still shut because those, those, those high-tiered, they don't need the voucher money, so they don't entertain those or welcome those. So what you have are substandard private school pop-ups that are short-lived, that end up closing their doors, and so the voucher doesn't work.
Very similar to charters.
Yeah.
So Mike, uh, one more question on attendance. How much is that extra $2 million worth to us? The, the, sorry, uh.
26 million?
2%, 2% attendance worth to us.
So three, $3 million per percentage.
So it's $6 million.
And you want to be over 95?
Well, our goal was 94 for this year, we're at 92. So we're, we're just shy of our mark. I mean, and we've been, you know, pushing that really hard. Um, so we've gotten an, an additional 6 million, but we're still short the 6 million that, that, um, that we, where we want to be for, for generating.
What's the highest we've been? What was it last year? Were we in 95?
Last year, no. 89, 90? Was it last year, were you in that 90?
You're, you're talking about just.
I would think 92 would be probably, we'd look, we can look it up because I don't want to miss.
We're, we're.
That's using the formula from the state, which is.
And the, the neighboring school districts are at what percentage?
We'd have to, I, I don't know.
We'd have to go look at where they are right now, but we could look at where they hover in terms of, you know, the past. That's what you're looking for.
Well, yeah, yes, historically, like, if you were to take out pandemic, how far back? Cause it feels like we've always been around 4% back, behind the neighboring school districts and I'm.
Well, we can look at that.
We'll, we'll do some research.
Day averages.
So the one.
The state average is 96%.
Uh, one of the other discuss, big discussions that we have is the basic allotment and, uh, adjusting the basic allotment, which is at 6100, 6160 to be exact. Um, aligning it to, uh, the, the rate of inflation.
Adjusting.
Adjusting it. And so now that would definitely be pie in the sky, cause it's 14%. And so that would generate about $59 million of revenue to us. Now that's obviously something that, yeah, it's not very likely. Um, but for every 100 that they do move us, you know, say they increase by a couple hundred, uh, um, our basic allotment, every $100 that they increase in the basic allotment is about, um, 6.6 million in revenue. So, um, just an example of what occurred two sessions ago in the 86 legislative session through the House Bill 3, they increased our, uh, basic allotment from 5,140 to, uh, 6160, which is a $500 increase. That, uh, resulted in $30 million worth of additional revenue to the district. Let me be very clear, when they do those things, they also, because they add additional programming, additional mandates, some of those dollars aren't necessarily just for, uh, the district's discretion. Well, one of the big ones that they do is you have to do a 30%, uh, ensure that at least 30% of the additional revenue goes to salaries. And so that's one of my, my notes at the bottom. But one of the things, some of the things that came of, out of the House Bill 3 was the early education allotment. So when we think 30 million, wow, that's great, then we start having to deduct, okay, but the early edu- education allotment, we have to carve out, you know, of that amount, 6 million towards that program or, you know, all those different, uh, new additional mandates. It, you know, it kind of softens the, the level of, of impact that we're going to get with those dollars. But that's another conversation that's out there. And then, of course, the school safety allotment. And so I know that currently our allocation is $9 per student. So they've talked anywhere from 100 to 200 is what I've heard. Not quite sure where we are, but right now, we know that there is a discretionary, a formula grant, I'm sorry, a formula grant that's being, uh, offered that will generate 2.1 million for the district outside of the state allotment. So we'll see, we'll see how that, that's out.
And, 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 you know, what we're pushing there, um, you know, in terms of legislation is really for them to increase the safety allotment to at least 200 per student and to allow us as districts the, the flexibility to determine, um, how that money, uh, whether it gets funneled to, you know, social, more social, emotional supports for students versus hardening of buildings. But I would say even 2.1 million dollars, you know, if we fall short significantly because of the age of our, of our school buildings. I, I do want to share, ask one thing, Martha, and, and you prompted what I was going to ask before when Ms. Nani was talking about the pre-K students. Um, via House Bill 3, there was also a provision that, uh, if you got to 180 days in your calendar, correct, that there was additional funding. And so for the, 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 the calendars that the board has adopted for the next two years, get us to the 180 days.
That's correct, and that is part of what we considered. Cindy, what is the additional?
I consider it about 2 million, but it can be anywhere from 2 to 3 million dollars.
Okay.
So the explanation, the calendar will, will support our, our.
How much, how much?
2 to 3 million dollars.
Okay, 2 to 3 million.
I, I think it would be helpful. Also, um, last year, you think to us, Martha, with, um, $30 million deficit in the next three years, if nothing changes and we do nothing, right? Um, if you could really list that out and say, over this first year, I did this, this, and this, and we are saving this much money.
Yeah, so right now, I mean, we'll, we'll bring that to you. I can give you, uh, the dollar amount that we are, that we've been using in our presentations with the Budget Review Committee and what we used with our T- Teacher Advisory Council. We're at about $9.5 million worth of cost savings at this point from the time that you all adopted the budget to now.
And cost savings, and then also, I would say, like.
It's efficiencies.
Efficiencies, also, um, like you're, you're bringing us up from 90 to 92. You wanted to be at 94. Understand why you're not there, but I think that would be a really nice picture to see what has happened over the past year in terms of that.
Okay.
And in the coming months, uh, we will also provide you with a forecast. So just like we shared the three-year forecast ends of last year, we'll bring one as.
Can you do one where you're like stressed? And we do one, and then another one where you feel comfortable, that way we see what we're at?
I have a, I have a random thought, and I don't know if this is the right time. But, um, on our calendar, part of the reason why we got to those instructional minutes was because we had so many half-days, right? Is that part of it?
180 days?
No.
No.
That's an extension, just, um, gosh, I, I can't speak.
Well, I mean, we, we, we can provide you some specific information, but I know that if you have an extended-year calendar that gets you to 180 days, 180 days, we're not talking instructional minutes now, it's days, then.
And I meant, so the days, part of that is with the half-days, right? Was that part of how we got there?
I would imagine, because they're counted in, in the day, right?
So the only, um, this is just something that's sort of been a recent reservation with the half-days. Um, is just my concern about, and, and the reason that this sort of jogged me was the day of the Cielo Vista shooting was a half-day. And it, it really did occur to me that, um, that it's a, it's a ripe season for kids to get into a lot of trouble. And so the only thing that I would ask and just sort of off-topic, if we're going to be doing those half-days to get to those, you know, 180 days, um, if we could maybe have something after school to help support kids who may not have care at home, or I don't know. Those, those were just some thoughts that I had recently about the half-days in particular.
And I'm not sure that the, the half-day was, you know, what drove the 180. I mean, I think it's been my understanding that traditionally in this school district, we've reserved those for, for parent conferences and they've been part of our landscape for, for some time. You know, I, you know, and, and that typically, in my previous experience, is something that we do at the elementary level. We don't necessarily do that for middle school and high school, so, um, so, yeah.
If, yeah.
Just a quick note, uh, seems like our numbers are going away here, so if we could, um.
Yeah, let's get some.
If you could go through the math. Give me a follow-up questions.
So I will, so I know this is very difficult to read. It's the budget development calendar, but all I wanted to share through this visual is that, you know, we are definitely, um, moving, uh, constantly furious as our campuses and departments have submitted their data. We're starting to do the analysis, we, as Masaya Vedra mentioned. I'm already starting to meet with the teacher advisory groups. I've got schedules to do presentations with the DAC, um, as well as our Budget Review Committee. We've already met five times. It's a committee of about 70 people that actually have been showing up over the last five sessions that we've had, and, uh, it's, it's been very good. So I will also be introducing them to you all in this couple of workshops so that, that you can hear from them and their experiences through that process. Um, and then the, I wanted to share a, a shift in the way we've approached our entitlement or supplemental funding that we receive as a district. And so what you see before you, and you've seen it in the past, I presented it before, it's a, it's a visual of the allocations that we provide our campuses. Uh, in some cases, the, and I would say the top section is basically the general operating fund and their allocation based on their enrollment. But then when you look at the middle section, the state compensatory education allotment and the entitlement, the Title I, um, what we've done is we've shifted from, uh, giving, uh, just a, a per capita allotment and having more of a focused approach as to how we allocate campuses with supports to ensure that, uh, we close the educational gaps. I know that last week's, uh, weekly report, Board Update, provided you with information on it, and I just wanted to share a little bit more detail, or if you have any questions regarding this. So what you. So what you see on page twenty of the presentation is that what we are calling uh campus support, uh supplemental support staffing packages that each campus will receive. So when you're looking at an elementary, a pre-K, or a middle school, every single campus will be receiving a math and a reading interventionist position. They'll also be receiving, if they took a larger, a large enrollment campus, they will receive additional support and not just the the two positions that I just mentioned. Uh, in addition, campuses with behavior intervention classrooms will also get behavior interventionist positions to support the the co- the campus. Uh, and then looking and focusing on our um other needs that our students have, we've talked about it continuously as we have our board meetings that, you know, it's not just about instruction, but also the the their personal needs and and supports that are perhaps missing. So what we've done is we've expanded the program of the focus on fam- on children and family specialists. In essence, they're social workers that approach our students and 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 help them with with any other social services they might have. So this program was primarily at the elementary level in the past years. It was really allocated to campuses that were willing to support the 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 FTE financially as well. And so what we've done now is we've allocated it across uh through high school level, and it'll be at important segments of either a point five or a one FTE.
But every campus.
But every campus should have a.
Position like this, so when we think about our community schools, um, you know, approach and wanting to move towards that. And these are some of the foundational pieces that we need to move, but, you know, put in place so we can move in that direction. I would also call your attention to the fact that you all as a board, you know, as part of your your uh your audit uh committee work. You received an audit that shared that as a school district, um, we were leaving uh close to ten million dollars worth of entitlements here, you know, on the table. And so, um, again, we've really worked to be very targeted and strategic about how that money is allocated so that it supports skill-based intervention rather than test prep and tutorial-based intervention within the school day. So it's part of what's, you know, clearly articulated in our blueprint in terms of academic excellence and a focus on the whole child. It's uh, we've adjusted our master schedules to account for forty-five minutes of within-school day intervention every day um for our um elementaries. And we're supporting that with strategic staffing so that students can be pulled out that are in, you know, kind of a low-level, tier-two and or tier-three range to get targeted intervention. We want our kids reading proficiently as they exit first grade so we can set them up for success. You hear me say often that education is the opportunity equalizer, but if our kids can't read, that opportunity doesn't present itself. So this is the reason why we're really focused on that and really bridging that skills gap. Because House Bill forty-five forty-five and after-school tutorial and Saturday tutorial is not going to get the job done for our children. So what you'll see in the staffing allocations is for all of the elementaries is an increase in their Title One allotments. Average range, Ms. Bledsoe, do you know?
So I I have that.
Oh, you have it, uh-huh.
So um what you, within your booklets, page twenty-one is a sample, and we're calling it a comparable so that every campus understands what, um, because the idea or the 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 impression was they've lost an allocation. And instead, what we did is show them that, um, based on the staffing that they're getting, they're actually gaining additional dollars from these.
And staffing units.
And staffing. So what you see on page twenty-one, you see, and it's a sample elementary campus with an enrollment of two sixty-two. The top box that you see, their campus support personnel is currently, these are district-wide allocations of personnel that we've provided in the past and currently are providing. Uh, parental engagement liaison, which right now we're looking at, everybody had a point five, we're looking to determine. Most campuses will receive more of a full FTE there. Uh, campus teaching coaches, there's two FTEs there, and then LPAC clerks, and those are to support the bilingual program. But then the bu- the the gray uh box basically tells you their title um allocation and their state comped allocation based on their uh criteria economically disadvantaged and not risk uh uh population.
For the current year.
For the current year. So if you look down towards the bottom, you see that this campus was receiving a hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of supplemental funding for um their school. When you move over to the proposed, which is the light blue box now.
Before you, before you get there, Martha, and and the way that that was being used was to fund an additional coach.
Correct.
Now, right now, our coaches are being asked to do two jobs. They are working with adults and they're also intervening with kids. And so I would share with you that the the better scenario would be that you have your campus teaching coaches focused on improving tier-one instruction by supporting teachers and their instructional delivery while your interventionists are working specifically with children on targeted intervention. But you're not asking one person to do two different jobs that require two very different skill sets.
So when you, if I'll just, let me share, the the last uh box, the, is the proposed um staffing and allocation uh for next year. So they would still get an allocation for operating expenses of of of, you know, that the campus determines as needed. So in this case, the campus would have twenty-five thousand dollars for operating costs and ten thousand out of, out of Title One and ten thousand out of state comped funds. But in addition to that, the two additional FTEs that they're getting, the interventionist, um, would move them uh to receive an allocation of more than forty-one dollars, forty-one thousand dollars when compared to current year's allocation. So every, uh, we're finalizing these for every campus so that they have a clear understanding, a visual of of, I did not lose uh an allocation. Uh, it's just structured in a different and more focused and intentional way to ensure that we address our educational gaps and improve our our student successes.
So the Title One A allocation is being maneuvered by the district?
Correct.
So here's my concern with this model, and I understand where there's a desire to be consistent. My concern is that the money is not necessarily funding the child that it was intended for. So if we could have a better breakdown of exactly how much uh per capita the district is getting in funding for Title One Part A and also state compensatory education, um, because, yes, while, again, I understand the consistency. I I also want to make sure that those federal monies are being allocated towards the students that they are intended to be allocated for. And that's part of the issue that I see here with even high enrollment campuses, an additional math reading interventionist. I mean, that money really should be used for the students that need it the most rather than a campus that just has a high enrollment.
So all the campuses would be.
But but what I would share is that, I mean, so I'm going to use the example that you have on your second page. So if, you know, a campus teaching coach at seventy-seven thousand dollars versus a math interventionist and a reading interventionist who are actually going to be working with students who show, you know, no progress, you know, in terms of their reading development and their numeracy development is absolutely what title mon- title one money is for.
Right, and I'm talking specifically about it following the kid that is allotted for, right? And so like with the.
Well, we're school-wide.
All these campuses are school-wide campuses.
It's all.
And and, yes, but you have some campuses that get the money even though their percentage of economically disadvantage is a lot lower. And and that's, that's my, my concern is, and I think I've talked about this in the past, is moving to sort of a per pupil um budget allotment when we're looking especially at equity, because a lot of times when we go by campus and we look at the allotment, sometimes it doesn't necessarily follow the child that it was intended for. Um, and that, like, you know, I'm just pointing to this, is there a reason why it would be a high enrollment campus here rather than uh a campus where they need additional support?
High enrollment, I think, may be a misnomer. It's a higher percentage of of, I mean, they've they've got an enrollment, so therefore their percentage of economically disadvantaged would afford them additional staff because one interventionist and one reading interventionist would not suffice to provide the intervention that the kids might need, right?
And that, and that's my question, is it a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged or higher enrollment of economically disadvantaged or the higher enrollment generally and just assuming that there's going to be by default more economically disadvantaged kids?
Well, I mean, you know, so she can, she can provide that level of specificity, but again, I'm going to reinforce the fact that we've got school-wide Title One uh uh funding. And so whether a kid is designated economically disadvantaged or not, the money can go to the campus because it's a school-wide Title One campus. And we're going to be looking at students that are in low tier-two and tier-three ranges that need additional academic support. And so whether a kid needs academic support because they're economically disadvantaged or just because they need academic support at that campus, they're going to get the academic support.
Yeah, and.
So how is that going to be done? I mean, is there a plan? There's, what's the plan to to do, you know, so many?
What do you mean, what's?
I I mean, when a child has been deficient in math already.
Well, what 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 you do is, um, like I said, you, we've got um a master schedule that allows for forty-five minutes of intervention time. So you would identify students who, you know, in in each grade level that would fall within a a tier, a low tier-two or tier-three range based on criteria. Those students would be pulled out on a certain number of days during the, during the week to have targeted intervention instruction with an interventionist with resources. You know, it it would probably be small group instruction, but they, their their intervention needs would would be diagnosed through possibly a MAPS screener. And then the teacher would understand, here are the skills that the child's deficient in in reading, so they need more targeted instruction and support, possibly in phonics or in word work or in, you know, fluency development. And so they would be targeted, you know, in terms of their intervention at that point, rather than, right now, we use this money to intervene with kids third grade and above. And we don't necessarily have good systems in place to intervene early with kids on their reading development.
So I guess the information that I'd be asking for for the next time, because when we did our strategic strategic planning framework, um, we had the discussion of an equity-based funding model. And so I I want to make sure that we're not, um, that that's included as part of the conversations that are happening early so that we know um exactly what that means for for students especially that are in their most underserved schools.
I I just had a clarifying question. You said that um campuses thought they were losing somebody, I, so can you, I I don't, I didn't get that part.
So so.
Was there complaints, was it?
So what I would say is that for for this particular example, so if you look at it, you could technically say, well, I'm losing a campus teaching coach. Well, yeah, you are, because you're going to gain two interventionists instead. And so you might have to have a conversation with a campus teaching coach that says that, you know, there's going to be a math and a reading intervention position posted, and, you know, I encourage you to apply. Or that campus teaching coach could be uh, could be filling a campus teaching coach position on a campus where there's a vacancy, right? So now you're losing a campus teaching coach, but you're gaining a math interventionist, a reading interventionist um i- i- in the process.
Oh, yeah, no, and and that makes sense. Um, it was just more like you said, people are mad or like, I don't, you didn't say that, but like, I'm like, are people mad about it? Like, is this?
Let me share a visual.
It's different.
Okay, it's just a visual.
So it's a shift, so there is a little bit of of consternation and and we're working through that.
Okay.
But um, but that, that's what that is.
And it's important to note that the entitlement, Title One Part A requires that we allocate seventy percent of the allocate entitlement directly to campus support. So we would never be able to reduce the campus allocation because they must get that direct support at that seventy percent level. We are actually im- increasing the support by this model that we're proposing now.
So this is, that this brings us right almost to the end, okay? Because I know that we won't have a forum in about seven minutes, so we need to work through that really quickly.
I got it. So, good afternoon, Superintendent Sayavetta, I have board members. My name is Juan Douglas, I'm the, I guess I would say, new director of employee benefits. And what I'm going to be covering with this board today is, now, you know, some of our health plan and what we're going to be doing and doing in the forward. So as you see in our first slide, is where are we now? And back in twenty nineteen, when PPSD created um its alternatives plan, there were several long-term goals set. You see here, we have those goals um stated there. The first one is, is create an alternative plan with better benefits in TRS and lower payroll deductions. Just to add to that, we are completely self-funded plan. We are currently no longer associated affiliated with TRS, we are using Cigna. The next one is, we did not have any increases in regards to payroll deductions for our twenty-two twenty-three year plan. Our district contribution for our health savings account did increase for a thou- uh a thousand dollars per year, and that's actually an immediate one that goes into employees as soon as the, I guess I would say, school year starts, that is available for our employees to use. Our district contribution went up to about five-eleven, which means we are providing a bigger part for our employees by them providing uh their portion to pay for our uh for the health insurance. And on this onsite customer service, we did add what is called a health coach. And along with our Cigna representative we currently have on board, uh, a big focus is, is in educating our employees to let them know what benefits are available to them and what resources are there for them to both, um, for example, if there's any mental health issues or if they are going to get some type of procedure, is where they can get the prices for them in regards to get their doctors and reduce the cost that they're actually paying for. A lot of what they do is coach our employees on how to utilize the resources that are available for them. On the last one that we have there is preparing for the R E P process. We are currently working with Hub International, and I have Mr. Randy McGraw be here with his team, and they're going to be assisting us with our future plan that we're looking to do. So I'm moving on to the next page. So here are just some of the options that are currently available for our employees. So our employees can see a provider of their choice. Again, with our, with our health coach that we have here, our Cigna representative, help our employees make the best choice that they have when they're looking for health coverage. Also, there's no referral if they're going to see a specialist, but again, we are focusing on having our employees use the resources that are available to them. One of the things here that is, that has assisted our employees to lower the cost when it comes to their medical expenses is we do have Tier One, which is the U M C Texas Tech um network that does provide lower cost to our employees when it comes to deductible. And we also provide outer network coverage. This slide right here, I just wanted to have this to show that these are current costs of the plans that we have for our semi-alien deductions that our employees get for each one of our plans that is offered. We have both our consumer-driven high plan, our C D H P, and our traditional P P O plan. The next slide, with this slide, this uh next slide is, it talk, it shows a comparison between our twenty-one, twenty-two and our twenty-two, twenty-three. As you can notice, there was no increases. At the time, we didn't feel there was a need for us to increase the payroll deductions to our employees, but I just wanted to show the board because there had no been increases between one plan to the other. Next page. So I spoke earlier about our Tier One Texas Tech U M C network. As you notice, when it comes to, and this is based on cost for the individual employee. If you notice, both the deductible and the out-of-pocket maximum are set at three thousand. That actually has been beneficial, not just to our current employees, but some of our employees who are of diminished means. This certainly helps them uh financially, along with our H S A. And we do have other plans in place to assist in our employees in paying for these medical costs.
But they don't have any coverage when they're outside of El Paso then?
Not in regards to the Texas Tech U M C unless they're going to a Texas Tech U M C network. And I know in West Texas, that is a vast network uh for Texas Tech. There are other facilities other than in El Paso, there are in West Texas as well. And the last slide that I have here is just a comparison that we have for our employees in regards to how much does the individual employee pay for healthcare as compared to our other districts that are here? And what I wanted to put a note here, if you notice, when it comes to our health savings account, that is tied to our consumer-driven high plan, we provide a thousand dollars, and if you look at the other districts, the closest one is kind of D E O. And what I said earlier is providing this to them upfront for them to use immediately. Theirs goes through a twelve-month process, ours actually starts at the beginning of the year for our employees to use. And.
That's that's all that happened.
The the only thing that I would ask for this time is, is just a better breakdown or a breakdown of how many people are using the C D H P versus traditional and what their, I don't know if there's a way to calculate what their actual costs are, I mean, are they, are they actually meaning they're deductible or just enrolling in the plan? One of the concerns that I had last year with the C D H P, because we're pushing people to C D H P, is that people on a C D. to CDHP, is that people on a CDHP are less likely to utilize mental health services because they have to pay the full cost for those, um, so, I don't know if we have something that sort of balances that out on the other side in terms of mental health services, but that was one of the things that did concern me last year about pushing our, our entire employees, uh, you know, all, our employees towards the CDHP.
Feel free to, you know, if I have any questions. Um, the time is two twenty-nine, and so we're, we're special board meeting.
Thank you for your questions, great view, thank you so much. And by the way, this is our, our, our new, uh, director of, uh, health services.